On the west side of Ninth Avenue. When you saw this in May, some commissioners who were present were concerned about the materiality of the ground floor infill and also of the two-story addition. The applicants have made several changes.
And the lack of variety.
And so this is the proposal you saw back in May, and this is the revised proposal. And Harry Pendelus is going to start his presentation.
Thank you. Hearing open, please. Motion second, without objection.
Okay. Just while we get after materials. You want material out of the bag, George?
Yeah.
Harry Pendelus, BKSK Architects. I want to start this presentation with an introduction, and the introduction to the introduction, which will remind us that our proposed alterations to the building, the one that sits on the corner of Little West 12th and Ninth Avenue, on the corner, the lowest corner of Gansford Plaza. It's a Gansford Plaza itself, as its trapezoidal shape, was created by the superimposition of a newer, more regular grid on an older, messier West Village. It's sort of a metaphor for our building in a way, not the shifting of grids, but the superimposition of something new on top of something old. And we're very privileged, we feel, to be contributing to the evolution of this plaza, which is emerging as one of New York City's great spaces in this very interesting and almost unique, well, all districts are unique, but the unique Gansford Historic District. And I would say as an aside, I feel privileged to be presenting it, the last hearing of this current chair and the projects we've done under his tenure. And so there's privilege in our minds all around.
Thank you.
What we showed you before, which John alluded to, was a two-story, visible, added height on top of the existing two-story building. And a somewhat regularized and altered existing base. To characterize the unambiguous and very clear feedback we got, in two parts, one was the predominance of glass was not seen as reflective, no pun intended, of the district and the building below its unique and industrial history. And two, that we should work harder to do less on the base. So our current proposal, going back to drawing board, you heard you loud and clear, and we're, we returned today with substantial changes and a building we were very excited about. In a moment, I'll be explicit about what we're drawing from the market-driven and industrial nature of the district. But first, let me just summarize the changes we've made. We've come back with a robust metal frame, emphasizing the metal attachment pieces for the screen. We've retained the screen element as a way of contributing to the Gansford Plaza. And we've reduced the visible facade by seven feet, one foot of which is a reduction in the height of the screen element, and six feet of which is the removal of the windscreen. There was a clear glass element that rose above it, but in the back plane. There is a safety railing that was pressed sufficiently so it's not visible. On the base, we retained pretty much the condition of the existing building. There's a couple of windows that were filled in with newer bricks that we've brought back to the building. But the most evident part of the northern point, the tallest windows next to the shortest windows in the building, and the minimal cleaning of the entire brick facades is, to us, we're taking a found artifact and passing it on, a little more ready to weather another hundred years, but in many ways unchanged. The marquee, and we'll show you details of this, with a canopy. Before, it was a clear glass one. In this one, we returned, you can't see it so much here, I'll just talk it, and George will show more. It's opaque corrugated metal for the portion that was historically market stalls and covered by a canopy. And that corrugated metal wraps the two bays around where it was market stall. We then continue with a canopy that's corrugated glass, similar material, but more transparent. And it stops one bay short to retain a sense of happenstance about that. Where the market stalls were, and where existing historic cast iron columns are embedded in a stucco-finished wall, we are staying with the course of action to remove that stucco wall and revealing the long-hidded cast iron columns. Where those market stalls stopped, we commenced with a much more robust brick base than was in the previous proposal, and that reflects a kind of, I've already used the word happenstance, but I'll use again, the happenstance nature of the way these bays have been filled, unfilled, storefronts filled again, and George will talk more about that shortly, and Elise as So, to the inspiration. In de-emphasizing the glass and emphasizing the metal frame, what are we drawing from? We went back at your request, and it was a wonderful exercise to do, looking harder at the history of the district. We are reflecting in our frame many of the metal pertinences to the buildings that have been removed, some still exist, and in a more general way, the history of flexible, trust, span industrial space, this is not from the Gansford Historic District, this is a generic idea photograph of industrial spaces, decayed glass panes were broken, replaced with other glass. So when you go back, our screen is now metal framed with window-sized glass panels, also metal framed, in a kind of, not random, but varied and textured way. So that sort of inspiration of the evocative decay of industrial spaces is driving us to some degree. And also, this metal frame is evocative of a host of things about the district. The sign attachments that often are, have been as large as the building itself, that's a sort of direct metaphor. The metal transport mechanisms and hanging mechanisms for the display of market goods, and the display systems for vegetables and fruits that was a direct linkage to the market use of our original first floor in the visibility's history. The glass itself we're proposing is different from before. Before, it was a highly textured art glass. This is a sort of, we call it wrinkled paper, as if you bought, you balled up a lot of paper and then opened it up again, it has these lines that are kind of organic. And the metaphor of green peppers is a little forced, maybe, but it's meant to reflect the organic nature of the goods that were pervaded here. And hovering above it all, or below it all, is Gansford Plaza, and we are seeking to capture the sort of texture of capers, of unit masonry that surrounds this, basically contributing to the overall sense of a working, gritty plaza, rendered in a modern facade way. So with that, we'll look at the screen, the addition, and the proposed changes to the existing base in a little more detail, and Elise will go into some of the pertinent history after that.
These are the other, these are the views of our
Name, please. Name to the record.
George Chee, BKSK Architects.
Okay, thanks, George.
And in most of the presentation that you'll have in front of you, you'll have the previous on your left hand side and the current on your right. The previous proposal, and I'll usually skip right through the previous. The current proposal, again, from the two other views, one from the west and one from the north, to reiterate the sense of scale that we think our architectural element of the screen has in our addition, and its presence on the square. And to emphasize, again, the proportionality, which we now made very direct, between the screen element and the brick masonry of the second floor, the history of the building, separated by a reveal from our addition. The brick masonry is a nineteen-foot dimension, and our screen is a nineteen-foot dimension above it as well. These are the elements of the screen, I'm sorry, this is what was previously, this is what it is now. And again, in each case, we tried to highlight in the notes the things that we think are the major differences, and they have to do with emphasizing the frame to a much greater degree, and making the glass a subsidiary element, but an important element within it. The screen continues to hang off the building by a two-foot-six-inch dimension, and it is comprised of frames within frames, so I think the best way to describe it is this, obviously, that is meant to sit on the model here. It suspended two foot six off of the building, and it continues to be open to, and a little bit more open than it was previously, the kind of clips that support it off of the building, so that you see its actual structure. The back facade here, the weather enclosure, is thin-profile diamond glass, steel and glass, firmly broken, and of a kind of rough character of the district. We've got that. There are two frames that have gone into making this particular screen. One is the primary frame, which you have on the outside, and the big verticals. They are about two inches by six inches, and that's their rectangular profile, and they're painted a very dark color that we think is historically present in the building. We've done some paint analysis, and Elise will describe that. Within that larger, and that larger frame is on a two-foot and a three-foot module as it moves across the building in a fairly random or randomized, literally randomized progression. Within that frame are sub-frames, secondary frames, and they are perceptually hung with this rod down through the metal, in a way much of the product was hung. And those frames are sometimes in back of that rod, as these are, and sometimes in front of that rod. They have a kind of L profile at their edges that's sometimes facing out to the square, and sometimes with a flange out to the square. So it has a back-and-forth way much of the paving of the square had previously. Those are, again, in a one-third and two-thirds kind of dimensioning, one-third, two-thirds, and cross their face divided up again, one-third, two-thirds, so that two-thirds is occupied with the glass, and one-third is open. That is the basic screen. Feel free to pass it around if you'd like.
Something I'm not sure I was clear about, and more, George, is that where there isn't glass, it's just open here, so as if there are missing panes.
Do we want emphasizing, again, that at times that those openings line up with openings within the fourth floor of the building that have Juliette balconies that sort of allow you to step out into that zone between building and a screen to experience that particular frame. This is the glass. Materials are painted steel, and the lighter tone material showing in the frame is a deep-glasted stainless, so very matte stainless without any dull sheen to it at all, with a totally different feel to the metal. We intend to paint, again, the same dark tone that we see in the cast iron columns we've got. The glass is this sort of organic texture, if you can describe it, and it will have to be laminated, and the lamination would then have, again, a kind of slightly organic scrim-like interior, so that it'll have a little bit more presence to it when you see it on the base.
So presence, not as transparent as that.
Not quite as transparent as this, right. And unlikely, you know, kind of rent in certain places, so that, you know, when you get this kind of a line where it's absolutely cold, you know, a sense of thickness of the glass, you want to hang it. Previous details, current details, I think I've pretty much described all these things. This is that framework line facing out and then facing in. I'm going to turn it over to Elise to
Okay, good.
Go back to
All right, fine.
Historic elements that we mentioned were provisions.
Thank you. Thanks, George.
Good morning, Commissioners. Elise Quaysart. This seems to be my day for gritty historic districts and complicated buildings. I went through the history of the site in some detail last time, so we'll just stick to the things that are most relevant for our design today. If you remember, in 1905, the site began to be joined together. There'd been a lot of different buildings, and there was an application at the Department of Buildings to create a market building that was right at the corner of Little West 12th and Ninth Avenue. And this was the Ninth Avenue side, the existing buildings that are still, these are part of our site, this is part of our site, they remained at that time as stable buildings. And the market was created along Little West 12th. This is a plan that shows it, this is Little West 12th showing the market stalls, and they turned around the corner of Ninth Avenue, and then the existing buildings at that time were stable buildings that you'd enter in, and you have horse stalls in the back. And this line right here represents the wall that separated the vegetable market from the stable. This is a very, well, it was a market district, and the market was very much part of this building. This district was really a fruit and veg market as opposed to the meat market that many other buildings served. And then later, it always had a transportation factor because of horses, but then later it turned into a garage, a partial garage. In 1906, there was another filing to create a two-story building for the market, and they also grabbed a piece of the Ninth Avenue, one of the back of buildings. So you see in the map that the market was here, and then the stable building continued on, and there was only one more building in our site that was left over, that was this one. And so they built a second story. What I forgot to mention, which is important, Harry mentioned the cast iron columns. We saw cast iron, or we saw columns in the front portion of the market. You see them here, 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 and so on. And then there were folding doors, something that you can find in a market, so that when the market was open, you saw nothing, it was just open, and the commerce occurred inside and outside. So we were working with that, and also with the existing condition, because we found the columns, to say that removing the nonhistoric stucco and opening up that market feel made a lot of sense, and we're continuing in that way today. In 1921, '22, the building was converted to a garage, horses out, cars and trucks in, but the market portion along Little West 12th and around the corner remained. So unfortunately, and this happens, the DOB record was missing, so we don't have the drawings. And while there's abundant photographic documentation so that we can really know what is going on in the facade of the second floor, all of the photographs show very dark shadow in the key places which are along Little West 12th and the corner. This photo from 1940 is the best one we've got for what was happening on the north end of the building. So by this time, by 1920s, we've had the whole site, but you can see that there are different differences in weight. The north end of the building were treated versus the south and the corner, and then along Little West 12th. We know that the fruit market and vegetable markets stayed in play at least until the 1960s, and we know that there were some alterations at the corner, although in the photographs, it's always blocked by stacked bricks, so the documentation's been extremely frustrating. However, talking about the upper floor, you can see, as Harry pointed out, three windows here, two of them were locked up now, we're going to open them. These two square windows were steel, steel lintels, we're going to keep those now as opposed to replacing them to do less with the upper floor. And the original windows were four-over-four wood, and we're going back to that configuration. The windows were replaced in the 1980s with one-over-one aluminums. And then we'll only work with the openings. There's one that's blocked up on this side, we'll open it up, it's going to be the historic masonry openings. On the lower floor, you can start to see there were garage openings, a couple of storefronts, most of this has been altered. Then we'll look at the existing conditions in a moment. But what I wanted to point out here is that the canopy that existed to serve the market was, had, appears from the photo documentation to be wood posts, and certainly, it was opaque, and we heard you the last time, and we're really working with much more opacity in the new canopy. We are not proposing posts, we'll explain that in a minute. I think I've covered everything from there. There were some minor changes over time in the interior stuff, a couple of little things, but the major thing in the late 1990s was that Pastis was added, this restaurant, it had been a restaurant in the corner earlier, but at that time, the existing white ceramic tile was added, the entry sequence was altered, and the existing metal canopy was removed from every place in front of their restaurant. And this is just the north end, gets you better, looks very much the way it did in 2003 as it does today. There was a garage opening, a storefront here, which, most of it was replaced with aluminum, there's a brick base there, and a little bit of earlier fabric way in the back that helped us with the paint analysis. Garage entry here, this is a storefront that was put in in the 1980s, and Pastis is right there, it's Ninth Avenue. I have these photos up because, since I've been working on the project, there's been a sidewalk bridge, and it's difficult to see, but in this photo, you can see that there's still a bit of a canopy at the west end, and all of that is steel. And you can also see that the steel posts have been bashed by trucks regularly, they're all out of shape, and the whole thing's a little questionable. We're putting a canopy up, but we are not using posts to support it from the building in order to enhance the safety and traffic issues. And if there are any questions about that, the architects can address it when we come back to it. So, existing conditions. This is a montage of photos that were taken prior to the sidewalk bridge being put up, but what you see, this is Little West 12th, here's the restaurant that exists, the stucco infill that runs down most of the building with hollow metal doors. At the west end, there's a storefront that's been there, it's a metal block storefront, and then there's an egress door to the side, which you can see in this drawing. Where you see the red columns, we've seen the capitals sticking out of the stucco for about six or seven of them as they head up, or go along Little West 12th Street. One of them, you pull the stucco back, so you can see the columns actually there. So we know one, two, three, four, five, we have evidence of, not been able to start to take this apart yet, but the intention is to go looking to see if we still have columns, there's been change over time, so we don't know, but the proposal was to acknowledge the market aspect of this end of the building, and going around onto Ninth Avenue, as the earlier documentation suggested that there were columns there. And we know then, in the 1920s, when the building was converted to a garage, particularly at this end, that there was a lot more masonry, and our proposal includes masonry at this end, working with the existing peers, adding a little bit more masonry in to accentuate the differentiated and complex history of the building. And George will go through that in some detail, but again, there's a garage entry, there's a storefront, another garage entry, and the nonhistoric storefront. There's an analysis that George will go through that shows a little bit more about what was going on here, but there's been a lot of change. One last thing, it doesn't show up in this drawing, but the top of the building has terracotta coping stones, or coping, and we'll continue to use that, and on both sides, the parapin is very irregular, and while this drawing is showing it straight across, we're maintaining And I think this is where I give it back to George. Thank you very much.
Much. Okay. So go as quickly as you can through the rest, so we have a good framework.
This is a quick analysis of the historic condition of the facade from an old photo to indicate simply that the bay that was closed historically with masonry is, in fact, now, this one was closed, this one was closed previously and is now open. So the record indicates that the degree of closure in here and the degree of openness varied over time. We embrace that irregularity in our design elements. So the changes from the previous design, on the Little West 12th Street side, again, windows, wood four-over-four, and at the top, lower portion of doors to solid metal, and wider doors and spacing in and wider doors and spacing in a not a regular framework, not justified or rectified versus the existing historic framework, but relating to our time and the work we're putting forth. This is what's previous. Currently, on the Ninth Avenue side, again, windows, wood four over four, existing square windows to remain and not removed. All existing irregularly spaced masonry piers kept, they are different bay rhythm, different dimensions between the piers, and slightly different sizes, and all of that has been kept, including a slightly different height in this location. These doors gone to solid, and then the addition of masonry walling in between some of the piers to indicate that irregular and variable history. We put a signage element in the center here, we would like to put our entrance on either side of this particular column with a sign centered on that. This is a simple recollection of the extent of the previous sign historically with a framework that then holds the centerpiece in the preferred location. Our canopy, the previous canopy was all glass as has been described. Current canopy extends along the full range of the market building that went two bays on Ninth Avenue, and we have made it primarily solid with some glass pieces at the cast iron columns, and then changed that to all glass with some interruptions of solid corrugated. As Harry mentioned, the last element, the last portion bay of the canopy eliminated to give, again, a sense of the fact that history had been in three parts to this building and that the extent was never all the way to the end. Then obviously, this glass portion accentuates the masonry reading and the anchoring of the building on this side, on the Ninth Avenue side, whereas the more solid canopy obviously emphasizes the separation of the two materials on either side. So those samples, again, just quickly, this would be painted much darker, it was panel fairly obviously and corrugated glass. Details of that canopy, on the Little West 12th Street side, where the cast iron columns were, there was a channel that accepted the canopy. On the masonry side, the openings are slightly lower than above the, on the cast iron side, we've kept the canopy to the same height, and we've just attached it in the most minimal fashion at the piers, kept it away from the building to, again, accentuate the fact that there used to be no canopy in this location. Canopy details have remained the same. Our materials, again, I think we've described them as we've gone through, the glass with the scrim, that painted, corrugated, the various metals. The top has not changed significantly. We are still a two and a penthouse story addition. We have taken the windscreen off and set back a railing from the edge.
Is that third floor visible?
Visibility studies, right. So previously, the visibility has remained pretty much the same because the edge of the roof is at the same height. The windscreen obscured the top portion by a little bit here. And then on, in this view, very little difference, but there is the top, just slightly visible. And from this, from the close in view, it's not really visible at all, and this remains the same.
What's that enclosure, that open closure, open?
It's sort of a mechanical form. Can we go back to that? That is absolutely not visible, just way back there. So I leave you with the images of the whole.
Okay, all right. Thank you, team, everyone, for the entire process leading up to today. Further questions on this before we begin a discussion? Yes? Yeah, okay.
This is just to add, the reference for the glass, I understand, you know, that it's changed, and I heard you explain why. What was the original reference? What makes it that this glass and metal enclosure is the right ones of this building in this area? We're mostly, we're looking at masonry, not saying that it has to be identical, obviously, but just what, where does that come from?
Okay, good.
You mean in the history consideration?
Commissioner, while we're flipping through, I'll try to address that issue. If you remember in our first presentation, we had a lot of slides showing metal fire escapes and sign attachments to buildings that gave a sense of layering to many buildings in the district. And while there are certainly masonry buildings, the material, metal is seen throughout the district, and especially in those kinds of attachments. So one of the things that we've talked about was having the metal come to the fore and then having glazing as, at this point, unlike the last time, secondary material. And if you look at the presentation, the glazing is much reduced, certainly need to have some glass to allow for visibility through the building. And so it's now a secondary re to the metal frame.
Okay, good, thank you. Discussion, Fred, please.
Harry started the presentation by saying that we wanted you to work harder at doing less, or something like that. And it seems to me as if that's exactly what you've done. The overused word grittiness, I think, of this neighborhood and now of this building, I think, comes back to the fore. Elements of a building in transition, not in ruin by any means, but certainly in transition and in scruffy qualities will be retained, and I think that's all terrific and critical to this, to making a building addition in this, particularly in this historic district. To me, the big move here on the top, which was kind of unsettling, I think, to many of us, although the scale and the proportions seem right, the delineation of, and the articulation of the architectural solution at the top seemed unsettling, I guess, to many of us. And I was probably thinking that it was going to come back to us in a vastly different way, and I'm really pleased that it didn't have to, to become appropriate, which it is in my judgment now. In other words, manipulating that interesting glass but taming it a little bit, I suppose, containing it a bit more in a frame that is now much more visible, which is the key to the solution. You've made the framework, the metal framework, relating the metal to the metal that you see all throughout the district, not only in the buildings but in the high line and other elements that exist within the district. So to me, that was the key to unlocking this solution and to making it appropriate. I think, as we probably all said previously, the differentiation of old and new, which is kind of a Saint Croix Saint philosophy in our world these days of making the new distinct from the old. And the way of doing that with the reveal and so forth and the material, the materiality of the addition is all, continues to be appropriate. But now, it's that reading of the frame, and I think the view, not so much this view, but that other view you showed us, is even more evocative of how the building can actually, from certain angles, be seen as almost a metal building. In other words, the glass is pushed back and you see a lot of the ribs in perspective of that addition. So, anyway, all in all, I think it's a terrific job, as we almost always see from you all. It just took another round to get it here this time, but I think it's a very handsome and appropriate building.
Okay, thank you. Marjorie, please.
Yeah, I agree completely with the comments, I really do appreciate, it's kind of incredible what the whole team is able to come up with in terms of different materials. And you say, okay, that amazing set of materials isn't the right one for the district, so you go back and you find another set of amazing materials that is right for the district. And I think, to Fred's point, the reason for me that this works so well is because the glass, which is a, kind of a, this kind of crinkly thing, which maybe you don't really get from the district, but the way that the glass is mounted in the frame, actually, I think, as a visitor, you'll be able to see very easily that frame from underneath, from approaching, and you don't, can't tell that in the rendering, but it will actually very much recall the sign panels and meat racks and so on. And I do think that that's actually what's selling it for me. I think also the reduction on transparency on the awning was very important because it's not about, an awning that's supposed to be about being, you know, she, she, I don't know what. And so it still maintains very much that awning quality from the marketplace. And I do appreciate also the Leave It Alone of the upper floors, that makes a big difference in contrasting the metal screen and the awning and the storefront.
Yeah, I want to first say that New York is a better place because of BKS K's clients who are willing to foot the bill for these amazingly detailed bespoke buildings. And God bless you all, and it's a good thing. This building is still very much a look at me foreground addition on top of a very, very plain base, which I think last time made it seem a bit off or weird. But I think that the changes made while subtle are enough to make it very much approvable. And yet another one of a series of significant visible additions to landmark district buildings, vertical extensions, that I think work and I think set forth a template, if not a precedent, for the kind of fine-grained relationships between existing context and new, modern, creative work that I think I'm proud to have seen come through these, this room. I think that the changes here are significant. I think one of the most important changes is the removal of the windscreen. I think it restores the proportion of the building, the relationship between the base and the addition. It, I think it really, I think it really helped simplify the building and make it quieter. I think that the increase in transparency of the frame structure that's already been spoken about is a significant improvement. And I would suggest the applicant, if possible, you know, could, could, I personally felt that the scrim behind the wrinkled glass was overkill and that the more transparency, the better, because that, for me, is the most exciting part of this, of the changes made. I think that the modifications to the storefront are interesting and good, and I think one of the ones that wasn't talked about was the change in the rhythm of the doors along Little West 12th Street from a much more insistent, I think it was five per bay to four, which is actually, I was noticing in the drawings, was consistent with the historical layout, and I think will be, will be more successful. I think the variations along Ninth Avenue are also greatly appreciated. I think that the canopy, my first thought was that the canopy along the garage portions of Ninth Avenue were kind of too much, but I think that one should be allowed that kind of latitude, and it is a new project, and the differentiation does recall the change in use there and the change in texture. So, all in all, I think it's a remarkable project, and congratulations.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the scale is suitable for the district, the marketplace quality is nicely retained, and I think it's an appropriate addition.
Thanks, Chris.
I think that the work that they've done to try to really relate it to the district has really improved the project. And I think that the storefront, the rooftop addition, and the canopies, all the choice of materials, and the effort to bring it to have a more gritty and industrial quality has been successful. And I think it's very important for us to allow some of these modern interpretations and references as we're looking at adaptive reuse of these buildings to have it be contextual, but at the same time, allow the use of modern materials to, and ways of structuring those to achieve this kind of relationship. And I think it's successful, and I can approve it.
Okay, I think that, I agree with some of the comments that you presented just now. I think that, yes, in terms of the bulk, the height, the size of the addition, that that is all very appropriate for the district. And I agree that a lot of the work that was done on the ground level in terms of the canopy, the door rhythm change is all positive. And I think that overall, the change from the previous submission to this one is positive. But I think also that the, while it's not a question of can this building, because it is radical and a very different structure in terms of material and texture from the existing building, be appropriate, I think that it can, but I think that some of the views, especially like the view from, I guess, Ninth Street between Thirteenth and Fourteenth, shows a contrast of something that really doesn't, I think, somehow work in terms of fitting in with what's there. I think that when you look at the building from the front and from the main elevations, it works, but I think that it doesn't work in every elevation. And I wish that it was possible for them to go back and to look at it again, because I think just based on the fact that it improved this much from the other one, that it could be still glass and metal, but maybe it's a difference in rhythm or this difference, and somehow the texture, they're seeing some other streaks that would make it better. But at the same time, I am.
Yeah, okay, well done, for all the reasons that have been stated. I think the contrast, context discussion is germane here, and also to the work that's going on, as Michael Goldblum said, in this room. And in this district is particularly appropriate, and, or wrong use of the word appropriate, is particularly fitting and sensible, given the history of the district and the designation and what was contemplated at the time of that designation back in 2003. So all in all, superb adjustment, or superb presentation, and recommend it be approved. And I'll close the hearing with that, please. Motion and a second, Marjorie, if you would.
In the matter of certificate of appropriateness for 919 Ninth Avenue in the Gansford Market Historic District, the application is to alter the ground floor and construct an addition. I recommend approval, finding that removing the modern elements on the ground floor, including the stucco infill, the white tile cladding, aluminum storefront infill, and exterior roll-down security gates, will not eliminate any significant architectural features and will expose historic cast iron columns. That the new storefront infill on the Little West 12th Street facade and in the first two bays on the Ninth Avenue facade will be set between the exposed historic cast iron columns and will create a large ground floor openings which will resemble the large doors of the historic market
doors of the historic market stalls in place at this portion of the building in the early 20th century. That the proposed storefront infill on the northern end of the Ninth Avenue facade, featuring more traditional proportions with large display windows, will be set within existing openings defined by existing masonry piers, and will maintain the differentiation between the two portions of the building, which reflects the historic development of this building. That transparency of the glass storefront infill will be in keeping with the mixed-use character of the building and the historic district. That the varied use and placement of the metal cladding and the translucent cladding at the canopy will reflect the original dimensions of the canopy and will further distinguish the two portions of the building. That while the canopy didn't historically extend across the northern end of Ninth Avenue, the proposed presence of it for most of the facade will be consistent with the canopies that were historically found throughout the district. That stopping the canopy before the northernmost bay of the Ninth Avenue facade will provide the irregularity and ad hoc quality found at the facades of these buildings. That the opening previously, that opening previously bricked in windows at the second floor of the Ninth Avenue facade, and installing new one over one painted wood double-hung sash, I thought it was two over two, while retaining the, isn't it two over two or four over four? Four, four over four, painted wood double-hung sash.
But wood, yes.
While retaining the altered window openings on this same facade, will restore the building closer to its historic appearance and retain features that reflect its historic development. That scraping and repointing the masonry joints, replacing deteriorated bricks in kind, and retaining the uneven stepped parapets, will stabilize and restore important historic material while maintaining the irregularities of the historic facades. And that the proposed signage, consisting of individual wall-mounted letters on the Ninth Avenue facade, will be well scaled with the building typical in placement and in keeping with the character of signage historically found throughout the district. That the construction of the proposed rooftop addition will not eliminate any significant architectural feature of the roof or building, and will not affect significant architectural features of adjoining improvements. That the history of this building typifies the changes which have occurred in the historic district with each wave of reuse, and that the presence of a visible addition would be consistent with the development history of this building and the historic district. That recessing the first floor of the addition will create a transitional zone that distinguishes the addition from the volume of the historic building. That the irregular surface and texture of the screen wall provided by the use of the metal screen elements and sculptured glass panels will relate well to the industrial metal elements historically found throughout the district, including sign armatures, meat hooks, the former elevated Ninth Avenue train, as well as the irregular surfaces of the masonry buildings and cobblestone streets. That the metal struts and supports for the glass screen will relate well to the steel rods and supports at the new canopies, the steel frameworks of the historic canopies and rooftop signs, and the fire escape seen throughout the district. That eliminating the clear glass railing above the screen wall will help to reduce the mass of the addition, and this, along with the recessed first floor of the addition, will result in a proportional arrangement of the massing that relates to the proportion of the building below. And that the rooftop addition represents the next generation of adaptive reuse of the historic structures in this district in a way that is respectful of the historic fabric and is also evocative of its time.
Second, Noel in favor?
Hi.
I oppose. That's approved. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.